Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand for the pledge? At this time, I'd like to introduce Robert Collins. Bob is a veteran who served the United States Army, Korea, from 1971 to 1972, Specialist Fourth Class. Throughout his service, he was received several commendations upon discharge and worked for the state of Pennsylvania. Bob, thank you for your service. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of all, liberty and justice for all.
Could we just have a moment of silence? A moment of silence to keep our servicemen and women, who are defending our freedoms every day, and our thoughts and prayers, and also please keep our first responders keeping us safe in all of our communities. Please keep them in our thoughts and keep them in our prayers. They have tough jobs, making sure that all of us are safe. Thank you. Bob, thank you for coming in. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, September 18, 2019, Board of Commissioners' meeting to order at 10:05 a.m. in the Commissioners' Conference Room at the Lackawanna County Center at the Globe at 123 Wyoming Avenue. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes from this past meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Proclamation presentations, 19-0235, United Way Month. Gary, let's talk about United Way and the good things they do and what we got going on.
Well, thank you again. It seems like we did this just yesterday, but I appreciate your continued support of the Commissioners and the employees of Lackawanna County, as well as the people of Lackawanna County. Just very briefly, just to inform you of some new information that's come our way. For years, we've been looking at the federal poverty level as the guideline for those who are in the middle of poverty in our region. And in Lackawanna County, it has been around hovering around 15% of the population are technically designated as federal poverty, at or under the federal poverty level. Last year, in cooperation or conjunction with United Way of Pennsylvania, we conducted a year-long study to actually find out where others in our community exist. The true numbers have come out that about 40% of individuals in Lackawanna County are at what we're calling a sustainable household level. These individuals are just one disaster away from financial ruin. There are working moms and dads, there are single moms, single dads, and many grandparents who are raising children of their grandchildren today. It's about 25% of individuals who we consider called ALIS, which is Asset Limited, Income Constrained, Employed. One of our goals, as we move forward, is to assist these individuals move out of this level of barely at a household sustainable budget for our community. We couldn't be doing this work without the partnership and cooperation that we receive from individuals right here in this building. Bill Browning and Jason Cavulich from Area Agency on Aging have been instrumental in working with us to continue. We meet with them almost constantly to figure out how we, as a community, can band together to help these individuals. I have to tell you, I'll be very brief, but in my travels throughout the Commonwealth, we are very unusual in that private nonprofit organizations such as United Way partnering with governmental entities like the county. That's rare, and we are blessed and we are fortunate to have that. So I thank you for that support that you've been giving us. And of course, I would be remiss at this time of the year if I also didn't ask you for your financial support as we continue to move forward. United Way and our agencies receive very little government funding. Most of the funding, I should say, comes from individuals throughout our community who contribute to the United Way through payroll deduction or through outright contributions. And of course, all the funds raised here stay right here, helping our neighbors in need. So again, I want to thank you for this designation, thank you for your continued support, and ask for your continued support and partnership as we move forward. Thank you.
Gary, stay up at the podium. United Way helps in so many different capacities between Lackawanna and Wayne County, and it's always an honor and privilege to be here to support the United Way and all of their endeavors.
Thank you, Commissioner. We really appreciate that.
It's a big thing, and like you said, there's a lot of people out there that are the working poor. There really is.
Well, one of the reasons we undertook this study is the federal poverty guidelines actually were established during the Johnson Administration War on Poverty and have not been updated since. So the federal government is now still using 1960s income verification, where in our community and communities across the country, there are so many individuals who are, as you said, the hidden poor.
Yeah.
They're individuals who just make $2 or $3 or $5 or $100 above a federal guideline, so they're not eligible for liheep, they're not eligible for food stamps, but yet, one disaster in their family.
Tip.
Can send them over the edge. And one of the goals of our United Way, as we move forward, is to assist these individuals and not just put a Band-Aid on the problem, but to pull them out of the situation that they're in. And this takes the entire community working together, workforce development, it takes nonprofit, for-profit businesses, organizations, governmental entities. So it's a big goal as we move forward, but that's the direction we're moving in the future. And again, we couldn't do it without your support.
Thank you for your hard work. It's not an easy job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
What programs do you have that you help to do that? How do you pull them out of that?
Well, it's a long road, and one of the things that we used to look at are big numbers. You know, for example, our heating program serves 322 people. The focus now is to work on individual families and solve problems one at a time. We do budget counseling with individuals. Individuals who come into our offices or our agency's office, for example, it's no longer just giving a grant and saying, "Okay, here, we'll pay your rent for this month, and then we'll see you next year." But we will work with that individual and that individual family to try to set up a budgeting process so that they will be able to continue paying the bills. In addition to that, we have worked through our member agencies, we do workforce training, retraining, and whatnot. We also run a program that's called VIDA, which is our tax program. Last year, we, through our volunteers, completed 2,700 individual tax returns for low-income people in our area, which afforded them the opportunity to get the child tax credit as well as their refund. We found out a few years ago that over a million dollars, a million dollars plus, was being left on the table in Lackawanna County from individuals who were eligible for the tax credit program and never knew it. So we implemented that program, and I think last year, if I remember correctly, it's in the $900,000 range that we were able to bring back into the community that went right back into the pockets of those low-income families. So it's a long haul.
I like the tax returns. That's a good idea. Do you advertise? How do you get them to know that you're doing tax returns? Do you?
Well, a lot of it is word of mouth, because once the word gets out, it's out there. But we do have every year an article in the Scranton Times, for example. We have the local television stations that do PSAs for us, and we have partnered with 211, so that the regional-wide 211, after January 1st, individuals call 211 and could set up an appointment to come and see us. Most of what is done is done by appointment. It's done out of our office, out of our conference room, lower-level conference room on Jefferson Avenue. We also have mobile sites. We take our show on the road, we do the Up Valley, up in the Carbon Hill area, we do Mid Valley area, we do Old Fortune Taylor. And we're also now into Susquehanna County, we also do Wayne County.
Yeah, are you doing anything on the Internet? Is there a big push on that for you guys?
The Internet, individuals who have Internet capability, who have Wi-Fi, can make their appointments on the Internet as well.
Good, yeah.
They can go on and directly make their appointments. And if you go on our website, which is, I'll do my shameless PR, which is www.uwlc.net, you will find information not only about that program, but all of the other programs that we run out of our office.
One of the things that was talked about with me a couple of times this year was help with credit, to get their credit scores up. They don't know how to do it, like, they don't understand how it works.
Credit counseling, we have partnered with consumer credit counseling as part of our VIDA program. So what would happen is an individual will come to get their taxes done, and we would have someone there onsite either to talk to them then, or we would make a direct referral to assist with their credit. But that is, that's a big problem.
Huge, it's a huge problem.
It's a big problem.
Especially with some of the people that I'm working with on the, you know, with the opioid crisis, a lot of those people and coming out of prison, they're zero, they're down at 450, you know, and you have to like...
Yeah, and I think part of the, a biggest part of the problem is an awareness as to the program. The programs are out there. The programs are out there. It's an awareness as to where the programs are and how you get connected to those programs. And that's one of the things we're trying to... Well, as I said, we see on average, this year it was 2,700 different individuals coming in for their tax returns. That also serves for us as an outlet to provide information. For example, we deal with seniors that come in and get their taxes done. Well, when they come in, we tell them about the services of the Aging Department and the senior citizen centers that are in the area and whatnot. We do the same thing for individuals that are low-income. Are you signed up for CHIP? Do you get food stamps, et cetera, et cetera, to try to get them connected to the programs that are out there. But awareness is the biggest, is one of the biggest problems.
Well, that's interesting. I'm glad you're connecting people to the places they need to go, because it's a huge problem. So thank you for your work.
It is. And going back to what you said, the great headline in the paper today about the opioid crisis, that 50% decrease in hospital admissions, which is amazing.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Niteriani?
You have been doing a great job for many years, Gary. And you do continue to evolve. Your programs are continually changing and going forward, and just keep up the good work and good luck, and anything that we can do to be helpful, we'll be glad to.
Thank you. As I said to a group yesterday, we were talking about, change is always difficult, but change is needed. I mean, I remember when I started United Way, I was given a bag phone, and I thought it was the greatest thing in the world.
I remember that.
And I hated the BlackBerry, but I got used to it. But thank you very much for everything that you do and for all of your support.
Oh, thank you, Gary. Maybe we could put on our county website some of your programs, because I think there's some great programs there.
Credit counseling.
There's a lot of people, especially the credit counseling, you know what I mean? It's a big thing, you know, these, a lot of families, like, it's scary, because some of them, like you said, they're like just a couple bucks short of being able to receive these opportunities, and they just... And then, like, if a boiler breaks in their house, that could put them right over the edge.
Exactly.
So like...
Yep.
No disposable income.
Again, through, we have a program called Gift of Warmth, where we would, you know, fix pipes in the winter, heating units and whatnot. And the stories I can tell you of the senior citizens, where we've received phone calls from mailmen, who said, you know, they've, and we would go in, fix the, but not only fix the pipes, but then link them up with Area Agency on Aging for other programs to keep it ongoing. But again, it comes down to awareness.
Yeah.
They didn't realize the programs were there.
A lot of people just don't realize, there's so many opportunities we have to that, and we're trying to push them out all the time through community relations, and our website and everything else, but there's so many opportunities that people just don't, they don't realize.
Exactly. And I would suggest also, if you wanted to, if you could put a link on the website, on your website, to our website, and then that opens up all of the programs.
Fran, if we could take care of that, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, we have a proclamation here. Whereas for 90 years, the United Way of Lackawanna and Wayne County has brought the people together to focus on the most important needs of the community to create positive impact. Whereas, the theme of the 2019 United Way campaign is united, we fight; united, we win. As we join fighting for the education, financial stability, and the health of everyone in Lackawanna and Wayne County, whereas the mission of United Way is to improve the quality of life for the people of Lackawanna County and Wayne County. By serving as a catalyst for our community's problem-solving and conducting efficient and encompassing volunteer fundraising efforts to positively impact the community's most compelling social problems. And whereas, the United Way advances the common good by creating opportunities for a better life for all. It focuses on education, income, and health, the essential building blocks for a good, quality life. Community support is needed more than ever to live united through United Way. Now therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Niteriani, and Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim October 2019 as United Way Month on behalf of the 214,000 citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to also thank our employees, who give themselves every paycheck and give to United Way, because it's, I know it's, I mean, everybody needs every penny they get in their paycheck, but that amount that you give is a big help to United Way. So I'd like to thank all of you for being involved and participating.
And the last point that I forgot to make, when you read that, it reminded me, this is actually our 99th year in Lackawanna County.
Oh, it's 99th, okay.
And next year is our big year, our centennial anniversary of United Way.
99 years.
So, again, thank you very much for your support.
We're here for you. Gary, you'd like to come forward?
We're here for you.
Good job.
Be careful.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, God.
I was skydiving. I was skydiving, that's what I tell the people, yeah.
There you go. Smile, look at me, take a couple of them. Very good, thank you. Gary, thank you and good luck with the campaign. Okay, 19-0236, Small Business Spotlight. Commissioner Cummings?
We have Nada and Company. Who's here from Nada and Company?
It's Nada, Commissioner, Nada.
Nada? Sorry.
Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Tell us about your business.
You might want to pull that mic down there, Katie.
Do you think?
Okay, I'm Nada Gil-Martin, and delighted to be here today. This is, this is a wonderful opportunity for us as a small business, but to highlight small businesses in general. And you know what? I don't like that word, "small business." I prefer independent, but they are small businesses. But we are in our 29th year of business. We've been in Lackawanna County the whole time, Chinchilla first, then moved into the annex to this building, which was a real treat and an excitement for us. And now we are in Scranton, but over on Marion and Capous Avenue, in a great redevelopment project, which is exciting. But we've been a part of this community for, as I said, almost 30 years. We began selling women's clothes and accessories and have expanded, because you have to keep coming up with something new, into gifts and even some men's accessories. And I think I speak for all the independent businesses when I say we are committed to service, as they are to, not only to our customers, but I think to the communities. The local businesses are the ones who support everyone's fundraiser, and with gifts, and even support us in terms of serving on committees. So it's critically important that we keep supporting them, because we're only limited by that support and also by a belief in what we can do here. This is a great place, and we have great businesses, and I very much appreciate all of the Commissioners acknowledging that today. And while my partner, Katie, is here today, there is another partner who is at home, holding down the fort. And if there is an individual who was the support and the inspiration for this business, it was Michael Gil-Martin, and he's kind of the unsung hero, and I hope he's not trying to pin up somebody's hem right now, but he'll do it if he has to. I really think you said it all. I don't know that, yes, very nice.
So 30 years, and you both started it as a, how did that come about, that you started this business?
I actually worked in other retail businesses, and I have to say, I think the woman that I worked with, we looked into having a partnership, but I think she threw me out of the nest. And she thought that I needed to do my own thing, and my husband was a schoolteacher at Abington Heights, and I was not employed outside of our home at that time, so we began this business in 19, well, 1989 is actually when we started the process. And Steve Seelage was building a complex in Chinchilla, which was absolutely perfect, so it was, we were really able to design it ourselves. And it was, and it's, believe me, the changes we've seen, you know, you feel everything should go as it always did, and then I think, gosh, you're comparing 1990 compared to 2020 is like 1920 to 1950.
Yeah.
And that's quite a difference, so we've, but we're surviving, trying to be innovative, and it's been, it's been a wonderful journey, and our, in fact, I would have to tell you, one of, a very special thing happened yesterday. One of our customers and friends became a naturalized citizen.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
And I was able to go, because, as she said, you've been part of this journey, and working together to kind of acclimate and give ideas about how to be a part of this community, what the right thing to wear, and so that was, that was, that's what this has been. It's been very personal, as I said, with these local businesses, that's such a large part of it.
Well, you're a testament to our community, and you're an inspiration for what you've done. 30 years, that's amazing. Congratulations to you and your family. I'm very proud of you, proud to have you here. I'm always proud to spotlight businesses in our area, because you are the backbone of our area and what keeps our economy flourishing and going. And, you know, Katie, now, you're all related somehow.
Did you pick that up? Yes, yes. I joined the business officially in 2005. I went away to school, lived in Manhattan for a time, and came back to the area, and then in 2007, as my mother said, we moved to downtown. And that really inspired involvement in the community. In South Abington Township, everything was kind of taken care of. Scranton needed a little more TLC, and we were, we were very happy to be involved with organizations like Scranton Tomorrow, and we spearheaded some of the, with a group of downtown retailers, the initiatives for the Holiday Window Showcase, and also the Snowflakes. We held a fundraiser in our store to buy the first snowflakes that you see downtown at the Holiday. So was, it was one, that really grew our community involvement through our business, which was a wonderful opportunity.
I'm really so glad that you're here to tell everyone about all of this. It's something that people need to understand, is, you know, what our small businesses do for our communities, and you've just given a great story and testament to what that entails and what it's about. So thank you for sharing your story, thank you for coming in, and I'm proud to honor you today for all the work that you've both done, and your family has done and accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Your building, your store, has been the catalyst for that redevelopment of that area. There was a time, many, many years ago, that that was a main thoroughfare between Greenridge and downtown Scranton, and it fell into disrepair over the years. And your store is a very important part of what's happening in that entire neighborhood. It goes from Greenridge through Pine Brook to downtown Scranton, and there's other development that's happening there now, primarily because of what you guys started. I'm going to give you a lot of credit for what you did. It's a beautiful store, things are moving in the right direction down there, and I think there's much more to come, and again, you guys have played a very big, very big part in that. Thank you.
With your business, you got to see it, like, just grow, like, literally. I'm sure there was times where you thought to yourself, geez, I'm ready to close the doors, or, you know what I mean, I'm having a tough day, we're not getting, the people aren't coming in like they should. No, you, I mean, I understand, I've seen it. So, but it's, like, 30 years later, you know, you have your daughter involved, your husband, you know, the three of you, you know what I mean, it's a family-run business, and it impacts the community. And your family alone just does an incredible amount for Lackawanna County and the city of Scranton, and it really matters, it really does. But small businesses, what our country's about, and, I mean, they're the ones that employ most of our citizens. So with your business and all of our business, small businesses, and like you said, you know, like, because small, but all the businesses in Lackawanna County, they really matter, and they really impact all of our citizens every single day. So I'd like to just congratulate you on a great job, and you know, Lackawanna County's always been for business, but Commissioner Cummings came up with this idea, it's going to be four years ago, this January, that each meeting that we would showcase a business throughout Lackawanna County. Let them come in and talk about who they are, where they're at, what they do, what their phone number is, their website, whatever they show, whatever, what kind of food they have, just a little bit of everything. So I'd like to also commit Commissioner Cummings, because like you said, this is part of this agenda, because of Commissioner Cummings being innovative and understanding from having a small business yourself, how much it matters to have people understand that you have this business, and that you want to be part of the community, and you want people to invest in you as much as you invest in them, so. With that said, I'd like to thank you for your hard work.
That's a great idea, yes.
I'd like to thank you for your hard work and being innovative for moving, because sometimes you stay in one place, you just stay there. You move, was it three times? This is the third move? The third move. And I'd like to thank your daughter, because she's gonna, she'll live this business, will live on with her. So congratulations. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner, but I couldn't have gotten this without the vote of both my fellow Commissioners on the idea that I came up with, so I thank them as well, so, for allowing it to happen. I hope it continues. I hope it continues, because I believe that small businesses are the backbone, as I said, and I truly believe this is a great, a great idea to have at our county, to showcase you and people like you, to encourage the youth of our, the younger generation to do as you did, and stay here, and build their own, you know, their own mark on their community that they're going to build for their future. And that's what you've done, and I can't tell you how proud I am of your work, and as a woman, I am very proud to give you today a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Nada? Nada?
Nada.
Nada.
The Spanish for nothing.
I want to say it correctly, Nada and Company. In honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight at Lackawanna County, given this 18th day of September 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Niteriani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. You're welcome.
So Katie, here's the real question. How's it work with mom and dad?
It's good, it's good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, here we go. Here with smiles. Smile up here, a couple, one more. Very good, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It was so nice to meet you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Aw.
See you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, ladies and gentlemen, you know, the beginning of our meetings have changed so much in the last four years, like showcasing our veterans who have given so much by having them come in, talk about their service, and do the pledge, recognizing just great works in Lackawanna County, and then the small businesses, like, this is the way government should always look. You talk about what's going on, what the great opportunities are in Lackawanna County, and the great businesses that are going on, and the citizens that give so much back. And I always say, you know, a lot of people do a lot. I mean, a lot, a small amount of people do a lot, and some people just don't do anything. And I just implore anybody that's out there, find an organization, find something that is your niche, and give back, because, you know what I mean, it's, you get so much more from giving than receiving. You know, Gary's involved in a lot of stuff... You know, Gary's involved in a lot of stuff, all of us on stage are, but it really matters to the community. So anyone, please, find what charity you'd like to be involved in, and give them some time, and it's very, very rewarding. And like, for the people that are retired, have a little more time that might have an opportunity, get involved. Meals on Wheels, that's nothing better than to go out and actually hand someone a meal. But even more beyond that is actually just talking to the citizens at the door, because a lot of them, that's might be the only communication they have for the day, and they're so happy to see a face at their door while they're handing them meals, like Meals on Wheels. But there's so many organizations out there. Just pick one, get involved, give back, it just matters. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only? Okay.
Actually, I think we have somebody on agenda items. Dixon City?
No, that's going to come.
We're voting on the roads.
Oh, okay. Would you like to come in? Oh, okay.
This would be your opportunity if you wanted to speak.
Yeah, but this is on the actual agenda where we're going to be voting. Thanks for coming in.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Lorraine Semcub. I'm here today because of a award that you are supposed to be either agreeing on or disagreeing on for Dixon City concerning the development and widening of Main Street. A bar and restaurant that I own is located right in that area. And I've been trying for a few months now to try to get some information on exactly why they chose our side of the road as the area in which to take three feet, 33 inches, I'm sorry, it was 33 inches, in order to widen this road, because the business is going to be affected. The opposite side of the street has a lot more room. It is also an area where, coming down from Scott Road, a turn has to be made onto Main Street, and that side of the road actually juts out. And yesterday, when Commissioner Cummings was over to take a look at it, she saw how many people that were coming up Main Street through that light actually, in a natural path, would come right up to the curb and would have to turn in order to stay on the path. If that area had been used instead to take that 33 inches off instead of our side, which is the other side of the street, I think it would make it a lot safer, especially for larger vans and trucks that come down Scott Road to make that turn, because it is very difficult. And having, you know, watched these people make that turn for the last four years, I saw how cumbersome it is, especially when the middle lane that was going to be making the turn to go up would be in their way. So then they would have to go over the sidewalk in order to, you know, make their turn, and that poses a safety issue. On our side of the street, if they do take that, we have -- the transformers are on our side of the street. So that's going to make the cost of this whole development issue, you know, come into There's also a pole that sits between our building and our parking lot. And that pole would have to be moved, because it literally sits right at the edge of the roadway right now. So the proposal was, if they moved it in, then it would be right at our handicap ramp, which is in front of the building. So they wanted to move it down further. By doing that, it would place it right in the middle of our building, right next to our sign that hangs in front of the bar and restaurant. Now, one of the other things that we've had to complain about is, right now, we're leasing the property, and the person who is leasing it wanted to put a little cafe, because there was enough room, you know, a couple tables and chairs, probably two tables and chairs to go around it. That is going to be impossible now. Now, anyone who deals with the Liquor Control Board, that is an extra charge in order to have outside, those outside conveniences and to serve alcoholic beverages. And that would also have to be gated or roped off. Now, that would pose another problem. As I said, that handicap ramp, if they take that extra amount of our sidewalk to become part of the roadway, people coming down that ramp, especially those that are handicapped, are going to just have enough room where, if they put their arm out, they're going to probably be able to touch the car. And I did talk to the ADA. They don't have any rules or regulations concerning this, which really concerned me. The LCB did not have any rules and regulations about it, because they're mostly concerned about what takes place inside the bar. I think the law enforcement would have more of a legal issue, because as these people come out of the bar, if they're a little tipsy and they don't make that turn and have just three feet to get by before they would be out in the road, I see that a big safety factor and a safety issue. Okay. Now, as I said, the opposite side of the street, if they were to take that, there's still enough sidewalk. It's a more residential, there's two apartment buildings. And when this whole construction takes place, our side of the street does not have a back alley. So there's no convenience for the people that are going to be affected to get in and out of their property. The opposite side of the street has a back alley, so that they could get in and out without The entire length of the opposite side of the street is 250 feet. That would go from the corner to the mainline Hoagie Shop parking lot. So it literally wouldn't even affect a business. And I think it would make it safer, too. I do have the proposed map that was sent to me, if you wanted to see it.
Yes.
Okay. There are three different maps that have been sent. This one is with our building, as you can see, coming around the corner. We would be right in here.
I have that.
The one thing I noticed is that whoever did the rendering of this drawing, you cannot see how much that corner juts out, what we saw yesterday.
Yeah, I think that both commissioners would be more familiar with the area.
That's the funeral.
Well, the kiddo park, in passing, here's all of the paths that are broken. The kiddo is the people come to the light where it's in. As they come through, they actually have to turn a little to the left, because the sidewalk, you're going to pass Scott Road, juts out. It wouldn't be close, it's only half a block that she's talking about. Two hundred fifty feet.
Okay. We'll have further discussion on your issue when we get to that part of the business for the county, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? No, no problem. Nineteen dash zero two two five, approving current payables?
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 288803 through 289841, inclusive totaling $2,899,537.48. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $11,511,367.3.
Controler DeBilio, do we have any?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. All invoices have been audited by our office and are in order, and there are no legal fees that we've been discussing most recently on this set of bills, and also nothing with regard to the Economic Development Department also.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions?
I do see a Terminex payment, which I was wondering, like, I was looking for their stuff on Terminex. They're the only ones that -- you wouldn't know that, Gary, but is that the only agency we use for?
I can double-check that, Commissioner, and just to find out if Terminex is the only pet exterminator.
The only lender I've seen that I could -- somebody asked me that, and that's why I was wondering.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I'll find out for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani? Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero two two six?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is the Stadium Authority of Lackawanna County Hotel Room Rental Tax Revenue Note Series of 2019, County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, authorizing the execution and delivery of a county agreement by and among the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, the multi-purpose Stadium Authority of Lackawanna County and PNC Bank and National Association, and authorizing all other necessary action of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania. Whereas, the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania enacted ordinance number 221 on August 27, 2012, which imposed a local hotel room rental tax within the county. And whereas, the multi-purpose Stadium Authority of Lackawanna County has determined to issue its Hotel Room Rental Tax Revenue Note, refund certain existing indebtedness of the authority, pay the costs of terminating an interest rate management agreement relating to such indebtedness, if applicable, and pay the costs and expenses of issuing the note. And whereas, the County of Lackawanna, the authority and PNC Bank National Association as lender and purchaser of the note desire to enter into a county agreement, the form of which county agreement is attached heretofore as Exhibit A, to provide tax, to provide for the procedures relating to the coalition deposit and dispersment of revenues generated from the tax pursuant to the ordinance in support of the note of the authority. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, and it is hereby resolved as follows. Section one, the county agreement is hereby approved in the form presented and to be considered by the county as aforesaid and ordered to be filed as part of the official records of the county. The Chairman of the Board of Commissioners or any other commissioner of the county is hereby authorized and directed to sign the county agreement, and the Chief of Staff of the county is hereby authorized to affix the seal of the county heretofore and attest the same, all as provided for in the county agreement. Section number two, the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, any other commissioner of the county, the Chief of Staff, the County Treasurer, and any other proper officer of the county are authorized and directed to take action and to execute and deliver such additional documents, certificates, undertakings, agreements, security instruments, or other instruments appropriate to effect the issuance of the note and the transaction contemplated by this resolution of the county agreement. Number three, nothing in this resolution or in the county agreement shall constitute or create a liability of the county with respect to the note. Number four, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
Okay. Gentlemen?
And here to speak is Brian Kozlowski.
Good morning, Commissioners. I really have to find a way to do a shorter resolution, so you don't have to read all that.
Thank you, Brian. I would appreciate that.
I'm going to let Mike go through the refunding and the reason why we're here, and then we can talk a little bit about the county agreement. So I'm going to turn it over for a minute.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you are aware, the county hotel tax, in part, approximately, 60% of the hotel tax is received by the county, goes toward the debt service of the Stadium Authority bonds. The Stadium Authority bonds were originally issued in 2013 for the refurbishment of PNC Park, where the rail riders play. That debt goes out to 2036. Based on current market rates, we, there is an opportunity to refinance those bonds through a bank loan. And as you can see, over the life, the net savings is 474,000. More importantly, or just as important, is it reduced risk. One, it shortens the term from 2036 to 2035 by one year. And in addition, the way the bonds are structured right now for the authority is that every three years, we have to go back to the letter of credit provider and negotiate an extension of that term. And it's been, historically, it's been going on three-year terms. What we've done now by this refinancing is we've extended that to a seven-year term. So we don't have to go back, we, you know, every three years, as we've been doing in the past, which cost the authority money to renegotiate those, and so we've extended that to a seven-year term.
It eliminates the swap, too, is there swapping?
That is correct. It eliminates everything. So it reduces risk and as well as lowers the interest rates for the authority, which, on the second page, shows that the hotel tax now has a larger portion, or a less portion of that hotel tax needs to go toward the debt service. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you had about this, but again, we are shortening up the term by one year and, you know, eliminating a lot of those risks.
Saving money.
Correct.
And just in terms of the county agreement, the county agreement is very procedural. It's the county collects that tax, and right now, the agreement, or under the agreement, the treasurer submits that tax to the trustee, and they pay the debt service on the bonds. All we're doing with this is we're removing the trustee and the trust indenture, and that transfer will be to the bank to pay debt service. So it really, there's no liability on the county for the debt. It's really just a mechanism to get the tax from the county over to pay that debt service.
Yeah. Okay. Does the board have any questions?
I just want to get rid of the swap, so is that the last one that we have now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, the Stadium Authority of Lackawanna Hotel Room Rental Tax Revenue Note, Series 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming in.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Nineteen dash zero two two seven?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving a local economic revitalization tax assistance property in Oliphant Borough. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding eligibility under LURDA for property tax exemption for certain deterioration property located in Oliphant Borough. Whereas, the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 76 of 1977, and known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LURDA, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements constructed on defined deteriorated properties. And whereas, in accordance with the procedures set forth in the LURDA statute, the Borough Council of the Borough of Oliphant, Lackawanna County, has held hearings to define the boundaries of the deteriorated areas within the borough. And whereas, as set forth in Oliphant Borough Ordinance Number Four, 2019, the borough has determined that approximately 964.44 acres of unimproved land, and is more specifically identified in Exhibit A, is a deteriorated property, and is entitled to ten years of exemption from municipal real property taxes under LURDA, following an exemption schedule that was duly adopted as part of the ordinance. And whereas, at regular meeting held August 14, 2019, the Board of Directors of the Mid Valley School District adopted a resolution providing that the same approximately 964.44 acres of improved land is more specifically identified in Exhibit A, shall be exempt under LURDA. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, the county acting pursuant to LURDA and the act likewise desire to provide the properties described herein exhibit A with a tax exemption as set forth pursuant to LURDA. Now therefore, be it resolved that for ten years, beginning on the first day of the first full tax year, following the issuance of the new assessment in connection first full tax year, following the issuance of the new assessment in connection with the completion of the improvements, and such tax exemption shall continue for a term of ten years from the date thereof, and shall be exempt from real property taxes that would otherwise be owed to Lackawanna County as a result of the increase in assessment attributed to the cost of such improvements constructed on the aforesaid property. Section two exemption schedule, the schedule of the real estate taxes to be exempted shall be in accordance with the below portion of the improvements each year. Year one, ninety-five percent exemption with five percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year two, ninety percent tax exemption with ten percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year three, eighty-five percent tax exemption with fifteen percent of the value improvements to be paid. Year four, eighty percent tax exemption with twenty percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year five, seventy-five percent tax exemption with twenty-five percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year six, seventy percent tax exemptions with thirty percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year seven, sixty-five percent tax exemption with thirty-five percent of the value of improvements to be paid. Year eight, sixty percent tax exemption with forty percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year nine, fifty-five percent tax exemption with forty-five percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year ten, fifty percent tax exemption with fifty percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Upon the completion of the ten-year exemption schedule term set forth above, the exemption from taxes shall end, and the entire property, land and building, shall be fully subject to the county property taxes. Section six, effective date, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption. And here to speak on this resolution is the Acting Director of Economic Development, Brenda Sacco.
Morning.
Morning.
This is a resolution, as Fran has mentioned, for a LURDA in the Elephant Borough for nine hundred and sixty-four acres of undeveloped land that is basically sitting there and not utilized at this point. So, the LURDA is really an incentive to promote economic development on these properties. And typically, the school in the borough, as they have done, has passed their resolutions, and the county just follows suit. So, that's what the resolution is.
Brenda, this project's the one where they're talking about probably thousands of jobs, if everything goes right?
Yes, yes.
This is a high-impact project. We're talking about thousands of jobs supposedly with this investor that's coming to Lackawanna County.
Correct.
And they're gonna extinguish the...
Minefire.
Minefire, which would be another issue, just to sell the property. So, this is a good opportunity for us to be able to, how do you say, to be able to take care of an issue, and also hopefully bring a lot of jobs to Lackawanna County in the next, this is probably a three-year-out project, there's a lot of work to be done.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. Does Commissioners have any questions?
No, just a comment that, you know, we're always looking at ways to get businesses here, and you see that it's tax relief, so that's the best way to bring businesses to our area, and, you know, that's why I'm always fighting for property taxes to be lowered or reform, and to help Pennsylvania bring more businesses to our area. And this is just more proof that, you know, tax incentives work, so.
Yeah.
You know, which brings about economic development. Just a basic principle that we all should know and common sense-wise, that's what works.
I would love to just put all my money back into my house, that's the truth, but this property is really, like, there's nothing ever been done. I can't even, I'm not even sure when the last time taxes were even paid on it, let alone the fact of the mine fire, so this is just, I think this is a win-win, just from the fire being taken care of, to the fact that the amount of jobs in the business, and just to be able, the work that's gonna go on, on this site, is gonna employ a lot of people. The infrastructure alone is gonna be incredible.
Correct, and we've seen that LURDAs definitely do work, and they're a great economic development tool, and in ten years, the three taxing potties will be receiving taxes on this that they've never received before.
If they come through with the thousands of jobs, that would be such an impact, it would be amazing to our county.
And job opportunities as well.
He said the county's here to always try to work with any business from outside to come in here.
Mm-hmm.
We have a great workforce, and this could be a great opportunity for our citizens.
Yes, and it has a rippling effect as well.
Yes.
Well, yeah, because we can't even, I mean, you know, you gotta get those jobs in here.
Yeah, you gotta showcase what you got.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Property in Elephant Borough. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Nineteen dash zero two two eight. Thank you Commissioner, this is awarding the CDBG for the Borough of Dixon City. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna County does hereby award the following Community Development Bank Block Grant Construction Contract for the Borough of Dixon City, Bowman Street Sidewalk and Curve Improvement Project. General Construction, Stafurski Paving Company Incorporated, Three Export Lane, Archibald, one-eight-four-zero-three, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for two hundred twenty-seven thousand eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna County does hereby authorize to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dixon for the Bowman Street Sidewalk and Curve Improvement Project. Here to speak on this once again is Acting Director of Economic Development, Brenda Sacco.
This is for a CDBG project in Dixon City, Bowman Street, so we will be doing sidewalks, ADA curb cuts, and paving the street. So, it's already been approved through Dixon City as a project, and they've also passed a cooperation agreement and the contractor agreement as well. So for us, this is us entering into the shared agreement, and the cooperation agreement basically is between the county and the municipality, and it will state all our rights and responsibilities of both the parties, and the contractor agreement just awards the project to the contractor, and as stated, to the lowest, most responsible bidder.
Gary, this goes together with the, what you're here for? This actually, this is part of the project?
Our office oversaw the bidding process.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gary Cavell, I'm sorry.
Yes and no. We're looking at doing a study for Dixon City, so, for the Bowman Street intersection.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure we incorporate that into our study, but we're not actually down at this intersection right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so, I don't want to be voting on something, because we're gonna be discussing that in a few more issues from now.
It's a different area.
Yeah, this goes from...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know.
Yes.
I know the Board also feels that way, too. Okay, does anyone else have any questions?
No, but you brought up a good point, because there's a lot going on in Dixon City.
Yeah, I wanna make sure, you know, I mean, we're...
There's a bunch of projects happening, and it's, uh...
We wanna make sure that we're able to figure out, make sure that one from the other.
Yeah, Gary and I have...
Gary.
Well, yeah, I just wanna make sure it's clear to the public, that's how, I always wanna make sure the public understand exactly what we're working on and what's happening. And this is something that should have been, I think this has been on the, we've been waiting for this to come to us, because this is...
We have to have public meetings to actually create these projects.
Oh, God, yes, yeah.
So, yeah, so, you know, Dixon City, we actually have a public hearing at Dixon City and invite the public. Again, citizen participation is key in the CDBG program.
Sure.
So this has already been, you know, approved through, creating the project, and then when we pass the cooperation agreement and the contractor agreement, a resolution is passed at Dixon during their meeting as well.
We just wanna make sure that there was, the interconnection was somewhat separated, because we have a citizen that came in today to talk about her issue.
Correct, yes.
So, okay, I'd like to make a motion awarding the CDBG of the Borough of Dixon City. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Can I, can I just have another point on?
Sure.
On B, on page, oh, there's no page numbers here. The last page, the borough shall, you have, provide all borough funds necessary to finance all construction costs in excess of two hundred seventy-two thousand ninety-eight dollars from Lackawanna County Federal Fiscal Year 2014, upon approval of revision. Sixty thousand upon approval of revision, 2016 sixty-two upon approval of revision. What does that mean?
So, when we move money between projects, so say they've completed a project, and there was money left over, we're gonna move it from one project to the other. So, a revision is just moving from projects that were already approved and created. So it's really a mechanical device, and it just needs to be approved through the state, and the state does not have typically any issues with revisions, because again, it's all Dixon City's money, and they decide what they would like to do, and they pass a resolution to do so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay. Nineteen dash zero two two nine.
Thank you Commissioner, this is authorizing the filing of local share account grant applications. Authorizing the filing of applications with the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, for various projects as detailed. Whereas, Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas, Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of various agencies as detailed. Women's, number one, Women's Resource Center, thirty, three hundred thousand dollars facility improvements. Number two, Greater Carbondale YMCA, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars lower level renovations. Number three, Greater Scranton YMCA, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars boiler replacement. Number four, United Cerebral Palsy of Northeast PA, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, two ADA vans. Number five, Boys and Girls Club of Northeast PA, two hundred forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, energy efficient window replacement. Number six, VFW Post seven zero six-nine Clark Summit, forty-nine thousand nine hundred forty dollars interior-exterior repairs. Number seven, VFW Post number twenty-five Scranton Theodore Wint, three hundred thousand dollars building renovations. Number eight, American Legion Connolly Park Post number five-six-eight Scranton, forty thousand dollars building repairs renovations. Number nine, VFW Post Einan, forty-four thousand six hundred and forty dollars building renovations. Number ten, First Friday Scranton, thirty thousand dollars project expansion. Number eleven, West Scranton Community Development Corporation, one hundred fifty thousand dollars building acquisition program development. Number twelve, United Community Outreach Food Pantry, seventy thousand seven hundred eighty dollars, materials for construction of cover for sidewalk and entry-exit doors for food distribution. Number thirteen, Lackawanna County Library System, ninety-nine thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars, purchase of new technology for early literacy, digital learning, and school readiness skills for preschool children. Number fourteen, Volunteer Host Company of Troop, sixty-one thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars roof repair. Number fifteen, Dumois Little League, three hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents for field renovations. Number sixteen, Geisinger Community Medical Center, one hundred thousand dollars equipment for labor delivery suites. Whereas, Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Grants. And whereas, now therefore be it resolved, this eighteenth day of September, 2019, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the submission of these applicants to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above-named entities and their respective projects. Here to speak on the resolution is our Grant Manager, Sandra Upshinsky.
Thank you very much. This resolution is actually the beginning. There will be possibly four or five more of these LSA projects that I will be working to submit through Lackawanna County. All of the, the projects are as varied as can possibly be for various agencies and for various needs. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, these aren't guaranteed.
These are not. This is a requirement of the grant program.
You're putting in for them, you have to...
I just wanted to tell the public how it works, that's all.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is a requirement of the grant program, that it be authorized by the county that it's going through.
So you bring these, somebody asks you for this money, or you, do you directly look for people to look for this grant?
This grant is literally one of the more popular, only because it literally, it literally can fall within all of these guidelines, things such as facility improvements, boiler replacement, ADA vans, it has many purposes and uses. The thing about it is that a very small percentage of these actually do get funded. It's a set aside through the gaming funds that need to go for community enhancement. So, literally, like, this, as it stands right now, we have about two and a half million dollars in ask for a program that has about a million dollars total that's contiguous with five counties.
So they're all competing for that one million, is what you're...
Correct.
So there's two, that's why I'm saying they're not all gonna be approved?
That is correct.
Okay.
And once it reaches the House, it is discussed in caucus, it has to be unanimous on both sides of the aisle. It then goes to the Commonwealth Financing Authority, where it's discussed and decided on from there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so we could just decide to not put these on this list? As Commissioners, can we take one of these off here? If we didn't agree with it, if two Commissioners felt it shouldn't be on this list, can we take it off?
It's up to you whether to choose, like, to choose to put them forward or not.
Okay, so we do have the ability to remove some, if we had two Commissioners say they wanted it removed?
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that they're going to be removed from grant consideration. They can, they can go through their municipality, or they can go through another city.
That's what I'm getting to.
Or a borough.
So if we take them off the list, they can go to their municipality and apply at their municipal level for these grants, same exact grant?
They come to us, because we have the capability, and we have demonstrated that we are responsible with administrating their funding and their projects to continue and get their projects done. Most of the time, they come here because they don't have another alternative, so that means it would just, it would probably not then get submitted and would fail.
So, but do they have the cap, you just said they have the capability of going to the municipal, at the municipal level in their borough or city, and they can apply for the same funding?
That is correct.
Okay, that was the only answer I needed.
They just won't have someone that, a lot of these groups, what happens with this, and if you look at some of these groups, which is one of the things that I help them with, and that I do, is grant, grant writing and grant administration is not filling out a bunch of forms and sending them in. It's the actual process of understanding the project that they're trying to put forward, and helping them, and get a perspective, and try and find the available funding that they could use toward the projects that they desire. And that's why I was actually put in this position, is to help the communities and agencies that don't have access to either a grant person, a grant writer, or a grant administrator, that can help them corral these projects and get them completed.
I understand, I'm just saying, I'm asking about an LSA...
You wanna remove projects from this?
No, I'm just asking the process, so the people that are watching understand how the whole thing works, that's all. I'm just trying to educate the public on the whole process.
This is, this is one particular grant fund.
Right.
Each one of them works differently.
Right.
Each one of them has different guidelines. This in particular, they can apply at their municipal level.
Yeah, that's all I was looking for. This, to the public, Mark, is the gambling money from that Pennsylvania, the State of Pennsylvania voted on, you all voted on, so that we would have gambling in our, in our state for property relief. That's why we proposed to vote yes on, on this, because we were promised to get tax relief on our properties, and this is, this is where this money's coming from, and they call it the loan-share account, and...
It's the local share account.
Local share account, sorry, which changed multiple times, that name has changed multiple times over the years. So...
It hasn't changed once.
This is, well, this is, this is, yes it has. Now hang on one second, don't interrupt me, please. This is money from the casinos, period. That's it, that's where it comes from.
This one particular comes from Mount Airy. That's what the legislature had decided. Mount Airy can...
Are you going to continue to argue with me, or let me finish? I'm just, I'm just trying to make a point to the public. This is casino money. Are you gonna agree with me on that?
It is casino money.
Okay, thank you.
It's one specific casino.
It doesn't matter, it's casino money. That's my point, it is casino money. And the State of Pennsylvania and its residents voted to allow gambling through the casinos in the State of Pennsylvania, so that they can get property relief. That's why they voted yes, to allow it. So whenever an LSA fund comes up, it's been brought up in the past, and I always try and talk about it, that I will not support anything that money should have been spent on tax relief for our residents. And the first thing they have on here is a cause that I work diligently on, which try and talk about it, that I will not support anything that money should have been spent on tax relief for our residents. And the first thing they have on here is a cause that I work diligently on, which is Women's Resource Center. And, you know, it's, it's like, what will you sell your soul for? And it's just amazing, like these, all these items on this list, I would, I would support normally, but because it's gambling money, and because it was promised to relieve the taxpayers on their property taxes, I cannot support any of these items because of where the funding comes from. I took the liberty to find out this September, we are having an upset sale on September 30th. This is the list. 1,100 people are on the upset sale right now. 1,100. This is the list that I just got today. People that cannot afford to pay their property taxes. This money was supposed to help these people, period. That is why I will not support this funding. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Cummings is absolutely right on the mark. We all voted this, it was absolutely supposed to be for tax relief. Didn't happen. It's wrong, it shouldn't have went that way, but it was supposed to be for tax relief. But, with that being said, the muddies that are available are utilized in so many different capacities here, and I understand why Commissioners voting against this, but we have to make sure that these organizations have an opportunity to have the option on these funds if they can get to them. I truly believe that it should have been used for tax relief, absolutely, positively, but what we have in front of us here in Lackawanna County is an opportunity for these organizations to be able to hopefully have an option on receiving these funds, and I believe in all of them, especially the Women's Resource Center, just like Commissioner Cummings.
Me too, I was a victim, they helped me.
But with that being said, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the filing of local share account grant applications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy, thanks for coming in. 19-0230.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into a license agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into license agreement with Steamtown 300 LLC for the rental of space for the Festival of Trees Holiday Event at the cost of $3,000 to commence December 9th, 2019, and expire on January 6th, 2020. Here to speak on this resolution is our Deputy Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan.
Bringing Christmas forward already?
I know, right? It just got out the Halloween stuff, right? But we have to plan, it comes quick. So, this is a great event, it's a community gift from the Commissioners to both the public and Toys for Tots. It's been going on for a very long time. And in recent years, it's moved to the marketplace at Steamtown, which, so this is our rental fee, we get over for a month and a half for the display of the trees. We really like it there because it's public, it's free, it's become very popular, people look for this event. I'm excited about the topic this year, the exhibit, anybody can enter, by the way, the money goes directly to Toys for Tots. It's here, there, and everywhere celebrating fall and winter holidays from around the world, so it's recognizing the diversity in our community, so that's what this is.
Does the Board have any questions for Maureen? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a license agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0231.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is awarding an arts and culture mini-grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award an arts and culture mini-grant to the following community organizations, $2,500 to the North Pocono Cultural Society. And here to speak once again is Maureen McGuigan.
And I just want to correct that, just because it, communities, it goes to the municipalities, so Moscow, well, because it is just for municipalities, but the nice thing is, if the communities feel strongly, they can re-grant the money. So the North Pocono Cultural Society is a wonderful organization, they do music, they do holiday events, summer events, so what's nice is the North Pocono community, several of them have decided to pool their money together so that they can have a, have more events that all of the municipalities can share in. So that's why it's a larger amount than some of the other ones that I talk about.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Maureen?
No, I just, I like the fact that Maureen comes in and tells us where the money's going, and she gives us these lists, and I appreciate that, which is finally starting to happen in all the other departments, so you've been...
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, you did a good job there, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion awarding an arts and culture mini-grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
See you in a few minutes. 19-0233.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is entering into a contribution agreement with the Borough of Dixon City. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a contribution agreement with the Borough of Dixon City for the Main Street Corridor Phase 111A project to include intersection improvements, pavement widening and resurfacing, construction of ADA compliant curb ramps, new curb and sidewalks, new pavement markings, and new signing. Intersection improvements will include replacement of existing signals at three intersections. Here to speak on this resolution is our County Engineer, Carrie Cavill.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This, this agreement right now is for a resolution, or the resolution is for an agreement that will have the county reimbursed for anything that we do for Dixon City on this project. Because what's happening is they want to do some streetscaping.
Yes.
And they're going to have lighting and some other things involved in that, so we don't want to tear it up twice and redo it.
So we on this road?
Correct, Commissioner.
We're responsible to pave it?
Correct.
But if they want to do something additionally, then they have to do that through federal money, is that how that works?
No, they received a grant, actually, from, and I don't know the specifics, I believe it's, it might be an art grant, I don't know. They had Mark Broder working on the grant.
What is it?
It's a Keystone community.
Okay, Keystone community grant. And so they have money to do the streetscaping, they've been working on that for a while. So instead of them having to go back out and redo everything, it makes more sense if we're going to redo the sidewalks in some areas, for us to incorporate their, their lighting and some other things, and some of their paving. So what we're doing is we're putting unit cost to that, it's a PennDOT project, well, it's not a, it's a county project, but it's being funded through PennDOT, so it has to go through ECMS and everything else, so it makes more sense for us to have this resolution so they pay us back for what they're doing.
Okay, so, so we're not actually funding this, we're just, it's like a kind of pass-through type thing, or?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
We're not actually funding it altogether, then?
No, we are funding it, we're 20% funding the entire project.
20%.
It's an 80/20. 80% is coming through, and I believe it's state slash federal, but...
Okay, and it's just, because there's a couple things going on here, so this isn't the specifically paving the road, right?
No, there's widening also.
Okay.
ADA ramps, there's a whole new signalization on, and I, I misinformed yesterday, we are replacing the signal to Eagle Lane, but we're not doing anything there. We're widening it slightly, and that was at the request of Dixon City Borough.
That's my point, Dixon City came to us and asked us, after they already talked to their residents about this, is that how that worked?
We had a public meeting on March, March 18th, 13th, 2018, and everybody who was affected was sent certified mail. So we had everybody there, this has already gone through our traffic unit, their traffic unit, PennDOT's traffic unit, and the only thing right now we're working on is acquisitions for right-of-way.
Okay.
And those three parcels that we have issues with, and, and the reason why we're on that side of the road is because if we went to the other side, we would have more permanent takes. The majority of the properties on that side of the road that we have a couple issues with are set back further. So, and I know that, that's what just came up, and part of that ramp is actually within the right-of-way, and they wouldn't have been able to do a patio there anyway because they're within our right-of-way. It's not their property.
I see what you're saying, I, I mean, I...
And I, I, there's not much we can do with it, yeah. I met with the, I met with the owner, Larry Lukasik and myself, for probably almost an hour.
Yeah.
And he showed me what he wanted to do, we did move a pole, trying to relocate it, and on that property right there, there is a take, it's all within our right-of-way, and we're still going to keep ADA complacency with four foot clear.
Mm-hmm.
But it is tight, and that's because the actual ramp itself is within the right-of-way.
Yeah.
But if we moved to the other side, we would have many more issues.
If this resolution is just so that we can recoup our money, this has nothing to do with the project itself.
Exactly.
Right, that was my, kind of my point.
Correct, Commissioner.
Like, we didn't, we didn't...
So we really, this should have been, this would, this, if it was going to be resolved or changed, this would have been at Dixon City's level.
In March of 2018.
In March, this would have been at Dixon City's level.
Exactly.
All this is basically us to be able to recoup our funds after the fact.
You are correct there.
Yep, and now, is this one of those projects that you said has been going on for, since 2010 as well, or no?
This is not 2010, I believe this is like a 2014, 2015 job number.
2014, okay.
Yeah, this is going on for...
It, it's been ongoing, it's part of your whole paving, paving going down, but we had to break the intersections out because trying to get through the traffic unit at PennDOT is lengthy, and then you have all the acquisitions. So we already did a bunch of paving out there, once we complete this intersection, then we're moving down further.
Yeah.
We're just paving.
Just paving.
But the intersections were, were requested at the county, at the county at that time to be, for safety issues, to be redone. So that's why we're, where we are right now.
So in 2014...
And that was prior to you coming in.
Thank you for saying that, okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't even aware that this was, okay. This was in 2014, and, anyway, so Dixon City's, just so the residents out there know, they're going to have a lot of work going on out there, I'm assuming, because we're doing the roads?
They are going to have a lot of work going on, and we're looking at trying to let it in early January, which would be a spring start.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because we got some anonymous letter yesterday saying that it was supposed to start in 2019, and, I mean, that main avenue, when, when was the last time we did pave that, that main street, do you know?
I want to say the last time we paved it in certain sections, because we can only do so much, we try to, the county has allocated so much money from PennDOT for, for so long, so right now, I'm stuck right now with the intersections, because, believe me, Larry Lukasik would like to move down further.
All the way through, yeah.
Yeah.
You only have so many funds, so I, I want to say maybe it's 2019, it's probably like 2016?
That, that, geez, I remember that road being bad going to, you know, 20 years back.
Well, certain sections are.
Yeah.
We, we only, we, we move forward down the corridor.
Yeah.
And honestly, and we only do a two-and-a-half inch mill and overlay two-and-a-half inches because that's how much money we have, and underneath is brick, so it, it...
It cracks.
It cracks.
Yeah.
And that intersection that you're talking about, it's been a nightmare right now. I, I understand that, but why wouldn't we pave it and then come back and redo it until we have the, the intersections improved?
No, I understand it, I'm just, I just, I just want the people of Dixon City to understand, that's all, and I appreciate the answers.
We usually don't do this part, but I'll, I'll let you say a few words for a second.
Yeah, so I appreciate all the...
...taking a portion of that today. I went by and we're coming down here.
They being Larry's, Larry's crew does base fill in there, trying to maintain...
Patches and stuff?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much for all the answers.
Yeah, we expect them to do that, yeah, we're getting ready for the winter season, we got to make sure, because once, once it gets cold, it doesn't adhere properly to the potholes. But I just want to get across, we, as the Board of Commissioners, this is basically was decided by Dixon City itself, all we're doing, this is just to recoup, recoup our funds, right?
For this resolution, correct.
For this resolution.
Yes, the, the rest of the project is, you know, was initiated before...
Before we were here, in 2014.
Okay.
This is extra work Dixon City wants, they want to do part of their streetscaping, so they're doing like colored pavement, yeah, some planters. And they said, can you make it, can you make it look like this?
Exactly.
They're also posting, you know, like, if you're ready to request, this is your payment.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I just appreciate you going into detail, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion entering into a contribution agreement with the Borough of Dixon City. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Gary. 19-0234.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is ratifying and authorizing the filing of an application with the Multimodal Transportation Program. Ratifying and authorizing the filing of an application with the Multimodal Transportation Program, MTF, to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, D C E D, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Multimodal Transportation Program for various projects as detailed. Purchase and installation of solar-powered bus shelters, $169,725. Whereas Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these multimodal transportation program grants. And now therefore be it resolved this 18th day of September that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize and ratify the submission of these applications to the Multimodal Transportation Program. Here to speak on this resolution is Colts Executive Director, Bob Fume.
Morning, Bob.
Morning, Commissioners. So Colts is applying for a grant from D C E D, and it's under the Multimodal Transportation portion that, and the grant is roughly $169,000 for 15 solar bus shelters. We have many shelters that need replacements, are, are in need of repair, so we're looking to replace these shelters. It's 15 shelters, so we're asking the county to apply for this money for us, because this has been done throughout the state, other transportation agencies go to their municipalities they're doing the work in or whatever, but we, we are putting these shelters all around the county, so we're asking you to apply for it for us. And the benefit of that is, if you are the applicant, we manage grant and we do what we need to do, however, it waives the local match. If we were to apply, we'd have a 30% local match, which is roughly $50,000. If you apply for us, that local match is waived. So it benefits both Colts and the county.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Fume? I'd like to make a motion ratifying and authorizing the filing of an application with the Multimodal Transportation Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Commissioner.
19-0238.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is extending the term of a K O Z, a resolution extending the term of exemptions, deductions, abatements, and credits for real property, earned income tax, net profits mercantile, and business privilege taxes within a specific geographic area in the boroughs of Jessup and Archibald, Lackawanna County designated as a Keystone Opportunity Expansion Zone, K O E Z, or Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone, K O I Z, in order to foster economic opportunities, to stimulate industrial, commercial, and residential improvements, and prevent physical and infrastructure deterioration within areas of the boroughs of Jessup and Archibald, Lackawanna County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, upon certain conditions and terms. Whereas the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania recognizes the need to encourage investment in the defined geographic area of the Borough of Jessup and Archibald, Lackawanna County, as set forth in Attachment A, that are experiencing distress characterized by one or more of the following: high unemployment, low investment of new capital, blighted conditions, underutilized, obsolete, or abandoned industrial, commercial, or residential structure, deteriorated tax base. And whereas, the extended parcel consists of an unoccupied portion of a K O E Z or K O I Z within the boroughs of Jessup and Archibald, which K O E Z or K O I Z expires on December 31st, 2019. And whereas, the Keystone Opportunity Zone, Keystone Opportunity Expansion Zone, and Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone Act, as amended, here within, referred to as "the Act," authorizes political subdivisions to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for an extension of the term of the applicable benefits within the respective unoccupied portions of the K O E Z or K O I Z, granting exemptions, deductions, abatements, or credits from all local tax identified in the Act. And whereas, approval of extending the term of the benefits for the extended parcel as provided in the Act will result in improving the economic, physical, and social conditions within the subject, K O E Z or K O I Z, by stimulating existing business employment, creating new employment, and diminishing blight. And whereas, it is expected that increased private and public sector investors will reverse will reverse the disinvestment and conditions of blight of the extended parcel by the termination date of the extended term. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of La Cuenca County, effective as of this date, 9/18/2019, contingent only upon DCED's approval of the application for the proposed term and the extended parcel of the existing KOEZ or KOIZ. The term of the extended parcel is extended for a period of seven years from the date of occupancy of the extended parcel or expiration of the KOEZ, KOIZ, whichever occurs first as determined by the department. The following provisions shall apply to the extended term once the extended parcel is occupied. Number one, real tax property on the extended parcel is 100% exempt, such exemptions to terminate December 31st, 2026. Number two, the following shall be exempt in accordance with the provisions and limitations set forth within the act relative to the extended parcel. A, business gross receipts for tax operations conducted by a qualified business within the extended parcel. B, business privilege tax. C, tax on the earned income received by a resident of the extended parcel. D, tax on, of net profits of the qualified business attributable to business activity conducted within the expansion zone. E, mercantile license tax attributable to business activity by the qualified business conducted within the extended parcel. F, tax on occupancy or use within the extended parcel. G, sales and use tax for purchases used and consumed by qualified business within the extended period. Benefits to begin January 1st, 2020, and to end on December 31st, 2026. Number three, the provisions of the act not within enumerated shall nonetheless be incorporated as part of this ordinance by reference. Number four, the resolution shall be effective upon execution conditioned upon the approval of DCED of the application. And here to speak on this, we have the Scranton Plan Economic Development Specialist, Bruce Reddick.
Commissioners, thank you this morning for your time, I certainly appreciate it. As previously mentioned, we have roughly 262 acres up in our Valley View Business Park, uh, where the Koz is expected to sunset at the end of this calendar year, and that is both in Jessup and Archibald boroughs, so in Jessup, there's roughly 121 acres, and in Archibald Borough, about 141 acres. Uh, as you know, the Koz has had tremendous benefit to not only the local municipalities, uh, as well as the school district, and of course, the county, um, so for us, to continue to attract businesses and to, can you, continue to promote economic development here in La Cuenca County, it's certainly a, an important tool for us, and we'll, we'll be looking for a seven-year extension. Uh, I do wanna make reference that, under Pennsylvania legislation, the extension process only allows for a minimum of seven years and a maximum of 10 years. Uh, we're not here asking for a 10-year extension, we're here asking for the minimum, just as, as it allows us to have an additional tool in our toolbox to continue to attract those businesses. Uh, just real quickly, one thing I wanna mention, um, at the end of 2020, where we have our current tax situation received from Slipco Developments, some properties that are coming to expire at the end of this year, 2019, those being some buildings that are currently privately developed and owned, as well as some properties that expire at the end of 2020, La Cuenca County will receive on top of its, its current tax base, roughly an additional $1.2 million in tax revenue. So these Koz's have certainly paid off, it's been an investment by the county as well as the school board and the municipality.
Is that just county taxes?
That is just county taxes, so school board's gonna see significant impact as well as the boroughs.
Now, for the viewing audience, a lot of these properties are burnt-out mine lands, never really utilized, never really been taxed, and it's an opportunity for us to be able to showcase and, what do they say, attract businesses to come to our community, because we're competing with all the other communities that are trying to come up with ways to say, "Come to see us."
That is correct, and quite frankly, if it was up to us as an organization, we wouldn't even be here today, but to be able to put us on the map, La Cuenca County on the map, and, and continue to attract businesses, and, and we're gonna talk about another one here shortly, but, uh, it, it's something that we just need to have, it's an unfortunate necessary, um, but just real quickly to give you an idea of what the Koz has done in more recent years, and we're just talking the past three years, so Cardinal Laminated Glass has built a brand-new 207,000-square-foot manufacturing production facility, um, Trammell Crowe is currently under, uh, under construction for about a million square feet, uh, under speculation here, um, Pasquale Kyo Brothers have put up roughly 35,000 square feet, they moved from downtown Scranton here, obviously, up to Jessup, so, uh, and, and there's just been such tremendous impact as a result of the Koz, we can't continue to operate in the capacity that we do without having some tools, and, and quite frankly, we're seeing that other communities have bigger and better tools than us, what sets us apart, obviously, is our location, layered in with some sort of incentive, and that being the Koz program, so kindly ask for your support of our seven-year extension.
Does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion extending the term of the Koz, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thanks for coming in.
Commissioners, thank you very much.
Commissioner, there's also a follow-up resolution, this is extending a Koz North Point, if I may.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you today?
Good.
Thank you for the time. I'm Dan Walsh with Christian Wakefield, and I represent North Point Development Partners. Uh, Brent Miles is here with North Point Development Partners, and we are asking for the extension of the Koz for a very particular project that would create over, well, roughly 1,000 jobs in Archibald Borough, and there would be a capital investment of $42 million inside of the building, and $40 million, it would be a $40 million building, with that Brent Miles from North Point.
Good morning, Brett.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners, thank you again for your time and consideration of this matter. Um, many of you may not be familiar with myself or our firm, I'm one of our founding partners, and we're based in Kansas City, the largest privately-held landlord in the United States. We've invested about $100 million in the county already, in what we spent, in Luzerne County, um, we've invested close to $500 million, so we're a very, very well-known entity in Luzerne County. Um, we bought this site, um, with the hopes that we could land a large tenant with lots of employment, and not to segue too much, I was here for the United Way piece, um, what we've seen with our success, we've created several thousand jobs in Luzerne County, and, and those employers are employing the, the very people that we're talking about, what you heard today, I won't, um, reiterate that more, but folks that are making eight or nine dollars an hour, they can barely pay the bills, um, maybe no health insurance, no tuition reimbursement, um, we have, um, we have a, a large net, we have cast that, um, we have a fish that is very close, depending on these approvals today, and we have two hearings tonight, um, it's either us or Connecticut, we, we do not win as North Point if it goes to Connecticut, we would not be their landlord there, they're working with someone else, so all our chips are in with you, um, we thank you, um, I think the Koz program has been a success, I think tying it with ours in specific, with about $50 million out of us, and over $40 million from the tenant, $90 million, 1,000 jobs, anywhere you go in the country, that's a big project, and that's gonna put your citizens to work, so thank you again for your consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I know that the work session, I think some questions were answered, and, and don't, and wanna take, not take much more of your time.
We'd rather have the opportunity here than Connecticut, so-
Yes, thank you.
We as well.
Does the Board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion extending a Koz for North Point Project in Archibald.
Would you, would you like me to read the resolution, First Commissioner?
Okay, that's okay, it is Resolution Number 19-0243, this is extending a Koz North Point, a resolution extending the term of exemptions, deductions, abatements, and credits for real property, earned income tax, net profit mercantile, and business privilege taxes within the specific geographic area in the borough of Archibald, La Cuenca County, designated as a Keystone Opportunity Expansion Zone, KOEZ, or Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone, KOIZ, in order to foster economic opportunities, stimulate industrial, commercial, and residential improvements, and prevent physical and infrastructure deterioration within areas of the borough of Archibald, La Cuenca County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, upon certain terms and conditions. Whereas, the County of La Cuenca, Pennsylvania recognizes the need to encourage investment in a defined geographical area of the borough of Archibald, La Cuenca County, as set forth in Attachment A, that are experiencing distress characterized by one or more of the following: high unemployment, low investment of new capital, blighted conditions, underutilized, obsolete, or abandoned industrial, commercial, and residential structures, deteriorated tax base, and whereas, the extended parcel consists of an unoccupied portion of a KOEZ or KOIZ within the borough of Archibald, which KOEZ or KOIZ expires on December 31st, 2019, and December 31st, 2020, and whereas, the Keystone Opportunity Zone, Keystone Opportunity Expansion Zone, and Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone Act authorizes political subdivisions to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for an extension of the term of the applicable benefits within the respective unoccupied portions of the KOEZ or KOIZ, granting exemptions, deductions, abatements, or credits from all local tax identified in the act, and whereas, approval of extended and term of the benefits of the extended parcel as provided in the act will result in improving the economic, physical, and social conditions within the subject KOEZ or KOIZ by stimulating existing business employment, creating new employment, and diminishing blight, and whereas, it is expected that increased private and public sector investors will reverse the disinvestment and condition of the blight of the extended parcel by the termination date or extended term. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of La Cuenca County, that effective as of this date, 9/18/2019, contingent only upon DCED's approval of the application for the proposed term of the extended parcel of the existing KOEZ or KOIZ. The term of the extended parcel is extended for a period of seven years from the date of occupancy of the extended parcel or expiration of the KOEZ, KOIZ, whichever occurs first as determined by the department. The following provisions shall apply to the extended term once the extended parcel is occupied. Number one, real property tax on the extended parcel is 100% exempt, such exemption to terminate December 31st, 2026. Benefits to begin January 1st, 2020, and end on December 31st, 2026. The provisions of this act not here within enumerated shall nonetheless be incorporated as part of this ordinance by reference, and this resolution shall be effective upon execution conditioned upon the approval of DCED of the applications.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I'd like to make a motion extending a Koz North Point Project in Archibald, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner, thank you, this is appointments to the La Cuenca County Assessment Board, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of La Cuenca County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the La Cuenca County Assessment Board with a one-year term to commence immediately and expire on September 30th, 2020, Paul A. Sotac from Peckville, Brian Davis from Scranton, and Jeanette Akuri Mariani from Peckville.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion to the appointment for the La Cuenca County Assessment Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, 19-0240.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to the Workforce Development Board, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of La Cuenca County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board, William Cockrell, Scranton, Central Labor, two-term to expire, to begin October 1st, 2019, and expire on September 30th, 2021.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to the Workforce Development Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, 19-0241.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is appointments to the La Cuenca Heritage Valley Authority, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of La Cuenca County, does hereby appoint the following individual to the La Cuenca Heritage Valley Authority, Greg Popel from Scranton, term to begin immediately to expire on December 31st, 2020, be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners of La Cuenca County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the La Cuenca Heritage Valley Authority, Attorney Brenda Kobel from Musick, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointments to the La Cuenca County Heritage Valley Authority, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, 19-0242.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is an appointment to the La Cuenca County Redevelopment Authority, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of La Cuenca County does hereby appoint the following individual to the La Cuenca County Redevelopment Authority, Robert Savakinas from Carbondale, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment, the County Redevelopment Authority, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Motion's 19-0232.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is a motion to approve the winter marketplace, and here to speak on the motion is our Deputy Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan.
Hello, again, I shouldn't have worn a Santa hat, no, we had a very successful winter market last year, um, we partnered with the Visitors Bureau, which this motion is bringing up again, and we're gonna have it again, be the first weekend of December, 6th, 7th, and 8th, uh, here at this building in the, in the street again, and, but we also wanna work with the downtown businesses, um, not only for the local residents, we feel this can be a real cultural tourism event that can grow, as many holiday tourism as Kirk Moni will tell you from the Visitors Bureau is really growing in the state of PA, so, we're excited about it, so we're starting to plan it.
It's nice to hear about it. Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the winter marketplace, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks, Maureen. Opportunity for the public to address the Board.
Morning, Commissioners, Bob Bowles, Scranton.
Good morning.
First off, I, you know, what we've seen going on in the county here, again, I'd still like to see the county get involved in instituting a PTSD program. It's something that we need, and it's being ignored all over, we see grants for this, grants for that, I think we need to put something on the program to start taking care of our vets and our people who have PTSD. It's a major issue, it's a national issue, and, uh, we just keep overlooking it, and I think it's something that we gotta start pushing for. During La Fiesta, we had a couple of our campaign trailers there, and somebody wrote a letter to the editor that we were parked there illegally, I paid $120 to park my trailers there, but what they didn't take into consideration is that the aquarium from Steamtown parked right at the corner of Spruce and Washington, blocking the only real access, if anybody had an injury or something, an ambulance had to get on, the county property, they blocked it with this aquarium truck. I spoke to the owner that owned the aquarium truck, Mr. Bassoli gave me his number, told me that he had given the keys to the head of the La Fiesta, I contacted him, met with them, and they said they had no idea who had the keys and who had the truck. A lady in a wheelchair actually banged into the side of it, trying to get around the stuff that was parked on the corner from the vendors and around the truck, it created a major hazard to police, fire, and our first responders, so I'd like that individual to know, when you criticize us, where we parked legally, they should have took the issue about what safety and concerns were for people, and politically, they were upset, well, on, on the Courthouse Square here, there were signs for Bernie Sanders and a stand that they were giving out cookies, and Shadow had a bunch of very nasty signs on the Adam's side of the courthouse, so these writers that wanna criticize me for what I'm doing for the, the community, and the President of the United States, they should have paid attention what's really going around in their own backyard, and I thought this was the forum I'd like to bring it to, if they got something to say, they know where the heck to find us. The, uh, other part, and, this is gonna create a lot of issues, I just saw this grant, $100,000 for Guy Singer to do something, yet, I was in court yesterday over them paying $100,000 a year for a dollar a day to park at Naug Park, which is kinda funny, here they do this, they park up there, they paid 100, they're parking for free again, that's a heck of a deal they got going on in this community, people gotta understand, they're a business, our parking spaces, I'm paying probably six bucks or better to park in the garage here now, today, yet, a dollar a day to park up there, they've let this go for years and years and years, now that I raised an issue that, instead of a dollar a day, at least get the price of a Big Mac, which is over $500,000 a year toward the citizens and help free the taxes and everything else, Naug first, and the rest of the community, the garbage fees and all this stuff, and take the money, and I was in court doing it yesterday, but I didn't see anybody from the, the, uh, city council, anybody out there, but everybody wants to be mayor in Scranton, yet nobody showed up to defend the people in the city, and it just turns your stomach, and you guys are trying to make things happen, you know, you got people coming in here from different departments, trying to make the city grow, businesses and all, we're doing some more development in the area, and I had just spoken to, uh, Bruce Reddick about one of the projects that we're gonna be undertaking in Jessup, and I'll bring that up at a later date. Everybody thinks I moved out of town, went here, went there, it's just what you read in the paper sometimes, they just sometimes don't get it right, I went there, we had to file and close some companies- I went there, we had to file and close some companies, which I'm going to bring up now. I was in Superior Court last week with the Lockwanna County Tax Claim Bureau. When they filed a lien on me personally, and then tried to put my property in a judicial sale, Colajewski and Joyce, I had to file a personal bankruptcy to stop that sale, which affected all my companies because I personally guarantee notes for those companies and killed us where we were doing some major expansions. I let people go because I got fed up with the nonsense. Joyce showed up there, and this is a question for the solic, the county commissioners now. Joyce showed up down there and argued his case, why he could do what he did. We're waiting for the Superior Court decision right now. But he went down as the solicitor. He's also the tax collector. Now, you're paying him as a solicitor and you're still paying him as the tax collector. He's wearing two hats. He figures out what kind of deal he wants to do with somebody to further his financial gain in the tax claim office. This is going to get the county in some very serious litigation. You can't do what he's doing there, wearing both hats, Commissioners, and then file liens on an individual personally. And the Commissioners raised that issue here when Colajewski and Scott were here to do that and said, "You can't do that. You can put liens on property. You can't put a lien on an individual." I'm a prime example of a company that's been here 58 years, what these two people did and the consequences are what's going to happen down the road. And it's sad that these, this could happen in our own community. We're trying to clean the community up from the city issues that went on with the mayor, and we still have them here. We need the house cleaned correctly. There's no way Joyce should be wearing both hats. And you paid him to be, he got a paycheck as the tax collector last week. And he also gets paid in his law firm for representing the Tax Claim Bureau. This is what went on last week. And the Commissioners have to make a decision. Get a solicitor and hire a tax collector, but don't have one and the same doing the job. Because this isn't over with by any stretch of the imagination. This is just the first step and it's called accountability. And it's going to be accountability for what they've done to me from that tax claim office that's not going to end very nicely. And I just want the Commissioners to understand what went on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Oh, and I am a candidate for mayor in Scranton, so just.
Congratulations.
Anyone else?
Joan Hodewan, it's 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. Okay. I am very pleased to see there is no increase in the legal fees. But what is our grand total so far for the legal fees? Do we have that number?
I believe it's $861,000. And I don't know the exact number, but it's
Okay.
861,000.
And do we have a figure yet for how much we've paid out in salaries with reference to the prison probe?
I don't have that. You know, I'm not, I'm going to talk, and I shouldn't be talking right now, but I am going to talk. Usually talk on a Commissioner's business, but I will speak just real briefly for this. We, the Board of Commissioners, the Prison Board, asked the District Attorney's Office to investigate the issues going on at the prison. They kicked it up to the state. We did not ask them to come in in a raid type of situation because, think of it. We actually told them we had an issue. So, for the taxpayers and the people that are in the viewing audience, just so they understand, we were trying to fix the issue from the start. Because it always comes out where it seems like we're like the bad guys. We are not. We're not trying to hurt or do anything to anyone that's out at the county prison. We as a board, in the Prison Board, made sure that we asked the District Attorney's Office, which kicked it up to the state, we asked them to come in. They didn't just show up. They didn't get called by somebody. We asked them. They literally were asked by us. And these, these costs that Joan always brings up are what came along the way. And a lot of the costs come from the amount of stuff that was taken by the state, which we just couldn't allow to be taken, which would be the backgrounds of a lot of people, social security numbers, a lot of other things. So I just wanted to just clarify that and I'll let Joan go from there.
Okay, and I understand that.
No, but the problem is, is when you say Joan, it's not on you, but it makes it sound like we, that we were like, they kind of like said, "We got you." We asked them to come in, you know what I mean?
I know you did.
I just want people to realize that all the time, that we weren't the bad guys, that we were trying to remedy an issue and fix it to the best of our ability.
Having said that,
Yeah.
it's still important for the taxpayer to be aware of the price we're paying as taxpayers. Now, The Times Tribune on February 3rd of this year put out a headline, "Pay a Heavy Price: Suspended Guard Salaries, Legal Bills Cost $1.45 Million." At that time, the legal fees were $691,891, and now it's up to $861,000. And the salaries were $761,833. And I think it's very important for the taxpayers to be sensitized again and again to the fact that when you have issues like this, it's coming out of a tax base that can't be used for other services. And right now, we're probably, I would estimate pushing somewhere around $2 million that could not have been used for better purposes.
Well, there's some, there's some really crazy lawsuits that were filed against us, Joan, in the four years I'm here that were lost and was a waste of taxpayer dollars.
Exactly. But, I still go back, I retired in 1998. And my parents used to send me letters while I was on active duty and out of, out of the area. You know, "This is going on, that is going on," you know? And I read them and I, you know, shook my head. But then when I came home and I started seeing, you know, year after year, multiple incidents, you know? The ward and having some guy, you know, mow his lawn or do whatever, you know? It's just like, don't we ever learn our lessons? And when I say the taxpayers should be sensitive to these costs, it's for this very reason. The underlying issue here is, we allowed ourselves to get trapped into the situation by ignoring the problems in the prison for decades. And I don't want that ever to happen again. So I will keep asking the question, "How much money have we spent?" until it's totally closed out. And you know, that may be a long time in the future. Which brings me to my another question. Do we have a figure yet for how much we spent on this government center so far?
Joan, this is, these aren't absolute, and they're not absolute perfect numbers, but, because there's still things being done.
I understand. There's still going to be invoices coming in and revenues still coming in.
The projects proxy, approximately would have hit probably over 20, 20-some million. And we have a lot of reimbursements and not all of them came in. So the projects should come in about 18.8, 18.5. That's where it should come in around.
Okay.
So.
But you're probably still going to have other invoices coming in and other revenues coming in. And it may take another year or two before the dust totally settles.
I think that most of this will be done probably, within a perfect world, before this administration's done.
I hope so.
And our big thing right now, Joan, and like I said, I'm not, I shouldn't be talking to this point, speaking of Commissioners, other business, we're going to be doing a walkthrough, basically, to see everything that has missed and has to be fixed and taken care of before they literally leave the building. So that's something that's going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Well, I know you've been tweaking the elevators.
Yeah, everything's going to come together. It's just
Yeah, and I see
It would have cost us more to, if we ever sat in our building over there and let this building sit here until they finished everything absolutely up, that would have been a horrible, it would have been horrible to the taxpayers.
I understand that. I understand that.
So we knew there was going to be contractors walking through here for quite a few months, so.
I understand that. By the way, I took a break to go to the restroom and you've got a few places where the flooring is coming up between here and the restroom. I don't know if that's a systemic problem throughout the government center, but go from here to the women's room, you'll find that two or three places, you can see the boards are actually coming up.
The punch list. That's what it'll be at the end, the punch list.
All right, speaking of money, do we have a schedule yet for the upcoming budget minute meetings for the general public to attend, or is that still down the road?
Nothing that's solid yet.
Okay. And also, you've been working out for the Steamtown Marathon?
Mm-hmm, somewhat.
Somewhat?
Yes.
What is it, the first, the first Sunday in October?
Second. No, first, 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 was it the, second, first Sunday, first Sunday in October.
Okay. Well, I'll see you at the bottom by, by Cooper's.
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay.
We'll see. I plan on being there, but we'll see, you know? It's always fun.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, Commissioners, other business.
Oh, is it me? Okay.
Yeah.
Did she leave, John? Oh, I have, John, I have your CDs, by the way. And that other speaker left, I guess. Oh, no, Lorraine is still here. She came in and talked about Dixon City, so. I couldn't see her. She's behind Jermaine. Okay. The thing with Dixon City is that there's a lot of work going on up there and I just wanted to make sure that people understand that there's a lot that goes into those projects that don't necessarily mean that we're doing the project as the county. We're just
And years in advance, like years and years.
Yeah, I mean, this, this was something that happened in 2014, so. We weren't even here when, when that was even
I was here.
Well, I wasn't. Jerry wasn't. But he probably knew about it. Were we going to take an executive session or are we going to wait until we're done talking?
There's, no, we don't take it. We're just going to, we're going to adjourn this meeting, then we'll be starting the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll do it then.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Well, yeah, there's, in regards to the legal costs that were happening, like Commissioner said, that was something that, you know, we had requested to be looked at by the A G's office and they chose to, you know, come in with all this, you know, guns ablaze and stuff. But, you know, my secretary was, can't hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. So they came into the, to our building over there on Adams Ave, and we were down at the airport board and when they came in. So that was something that, you know, wasn't our decision. We didn't have a part in that. And that brought on legal costs that actually I don't believe we should have had to deal with, but anyway, we did. And we're talking about bringing jobs into the community and these L R Ds and all these tax breaks and stuff. There was an interesting article in the Scranton Times that I was, I don't have, I was told about. And it's about how we don't have the people here to fill the jobs because the economy is doing so much better. So, this is part of something that Virginia Toronto's been working on, just so the people know how the county's involved in that. And she's doing an excellent job in her department to try and help bring allocations and funding to train the kids at young ages. And that was part of that video. I don't know if you remember, Commissioners, where she showed a video on her telephone where the grade school kids can actually look into the classroom of C T C and learn a little bit about that specific job, whether it be, you know, I don't know, nursing, I know nursing goes over there, or food prep. They can go right into the restaurant and talk to one of the kids that are doing food prep and learn about what they do and talk to them directly and listen to what they're saying. So, a lot of different programs that are trying to implement to get them interested in different jobs that are for the future and for our county, that we really need some, some help. And Lockwanna College is doing a lot of work with that, too, I know. They have their new occupational therapy program. And a couple of other things that they're working with the gas companies, I believe, correct?
Yes, yes, they are. They're actually trying to, they're educating students so they can go right out into the workforce.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, this is something that, it is, you know, something we should be looking at all the time. And it's something that, you know, I think all three Commissioners up here have been trying to do. And especially with the small businesses, that's another aspect of that, where you can show people that you don't necessarily need a four-year college degree to make a living in Lockwanna County. All you need is your ingenuity and your chutzpah and you can make it on your own here. And our community will, will help to support you and your endeavors. And especially at your county level with three business owners sitting at the dais. So, it's extremely important to me and to numerous other people. The L S A funding.